All right, the time is now six o'clock. I'll call tonight's school board meeting to order. Roll call has been taken. We'll go ahead and send for the pledge of allegiance. All right, thank you for that. Now we'll move on to review and approve tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as written? Moved by Vice Chair Walker Andrew, seconded by Vice Chair of Garris. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, all trustees in favor for approving the agenda as written? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is to approve the minutes for the regular board meeting of December 10th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Moved by Trustee Wake, seconded by Trustee Walsh. Any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, all trustees in favor for approving the minutes of December 10th? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is public comment. The public comment portion of the meeting is set aside for the public to address the board as a body. It is not time for board response or for the public to ask questions. Do not infringe on right of privacy of others. Please sign in and spell your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. The chair or acting chair may interrupt or terminate an individual speaker if the statements are out of order or over three minutes are personally directed to an individual. Any public comment?
No.
No public comment. All right, moving on to reports and announcements. First up are student trustee reports. And the first school to go is Big Sky High School.
Hi guys, I hope you guys are doing well. My name is Aspen Gronier. First of all, for Big Sky High School, we put, our link crew put on together a snowball fight, which was ultimately a dodgeball tournament. To sign up, they had to donate toys, which we had over 50 toys that got donated. That was donated to local communities around town. And we also had a total of 17 sign up, which we got a profit, which we also donated to local charities around town. In December, we did an HSA Giving Tree for Health Science Academy, where we asked teachers if they needed anything for their classrooms. Almost everything was bought for those teachers that needed stuff. Along with that, our Giving Tree for our students had everything bought as well for them, which we were very, very proud of our community for doing. Next week on Friday, January 24th, our National Honor Society is putting together a pancake breakfast fix, which will just be a thank you to teachers and to help end the end of the semester. We will be providing pancakes, fresh fruit, and coffee, which we were all able to get donated to us actually, which we were very thankful to the community for. Our key club has been very involved in the community the past couple of weeks. We have been doing a bunch of power packs at the food bank, and also have around 25 students reading at local middle schools in a program called Row. Our student government is working on our GOAT game, which is going to take place on February 7th. We are very excited and they've been working really hard day and night and have just a lot planned. Finally, for sports, our sports teams are doing really good. Our girls just swept Sentinel and Hellgate, which we were very, very proud of. Our boys team's also doing really good, and they're in Glacier Tonight playing. And they will, the girls and boys will both have a game at home on Thursday. And then wrestling's also doing very good. They just had a duel at Hellgate, which went very successfully. And our swim meet will have their first home meet this weekend at the Grizz Pool. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Hellgate High School.
All right, Happy New Year everyone. I don't know if I can still say that, but Happy New Year. From Hellgate, Stella and I, as well as the rest of our student government officers, met with our principal, and he announced that we're going to have new classes next year specifically for media. So ninth and eighth, ninth through 11th graders are starting to enroll in their classes for next year. Our theater is starting Hades Town. The cast list has been finalized. And we're seeing a lot of collaboration with other music groups as well, such as the Band and Orchestra for the Pitt Orchestra Group. The National Honor Society projects are currently going on. We're seeing collaboration with a lot of community organizations like the Pavarello Center, the YMCA, YWCA, et cetera. And our student government is going to be hosting an art show in collaboration with the ZAC. And we're seeing a lot of preparation for finals week take place. And Hellgate will be matching Sentinel and Big Sky with the block schedule for that week. And then student government is continuing to outline our goals for the rest of the year, with our seniors continuing to plan for graduation, specifically with our grad speaker.
Additionally, our winter sports have officially started and have been going really well. This weekend, our boys and girls played against, played against Big Sky, and our boys were able to win. And then additionally, we have a game against Sentinel this upcoming week. So far, our just like seasonal stats is our boys are five to one, and our girls' basketball is two to four. Additionally, BPA had a record high of 31 state qualifiers from the regional competition, as well as HOSA starting off to fundraise for the International Leadership Conference. Furthermore, just about like student government and like what we've been working on is we are introducing Class Cup and getting ready to announce that to our school. Since we won't be participating in GOAT this year, we still really want to encourage whole school involvement in a way for classes to collaborate together, all hopefully reaching an end goal of just more school spirit. So that will include philanthropy as part of our like fun Class Cup rivalry event. And then additionally, we are working with our special education department in t-shirt sales. Hellgate used to make all of their own like merchandise in a way, and then we kind of lost that through COVID. And now we're working with them in hopes to just like encourage more parts of the school working together, as well as being able to create our own merch for games. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Seeley Swan High School.
Hi, my name is Reagan Jones. Thank you so much for having me. I'm going to briefly talk about our sports program, our Destinations for Education program, and our BPA club. First, our sports program. The Lady Blackhawks have had a very successful weekend, ending with them being undefeated in the conference, their current record being three and O. They're one of the only two teams left in our conference undefeated. Unlike the girls, however, the boys have had a tougher season, experiencing their first conference loss last weekend. Their record, their record being two and one. This weekend, the Blackhawks will compete in two more conference game, one of those teams being Seeley's rival, the Granite Prospectors. Very excited for the game. We have a lot of people going. Next, I'll be discussing our BPA program. Our students competed in regional compet, at the regional competition in Missoula College last week. Eight students competed in person at the competition. Four qualified for state in their individual events, as well as one team. Five students are also competing in the virtual national event, and will be submitting their work this week. Lastly, I'll be discussing our education, our Destinations for Education program, which is actively preparing for their trip to Costa Rica that is set for March 26th to April 5th. In December, the travelers had a raffle for Visa gift cards, as well as a pizza fundraiser. The students sold handmade and delivered over 300 pizzas, raising money for their travel expenses. Currently, 18 students are set to travel in March, where they will participate in service projects, Spanish lessons, and cultural engagement, including home stays with local families. The travelers will be hosting a dessert silent auction at the home basketball game on January 25th, and they couldn't be more excited. Thank you so much for your time. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Next up is Sentinel High School.
One field that Sentinel is trying to promote is our building and trades classes, which are available to all grades. This year, we got a new trades teacher, and he has done a great job of building up these courses while also molding the criteria in order to meet students where they've left off with previous teachers. In Trades 1, students learn at least one new skill, technique, or tool during each unit, and then moving into Trades 2, they kind of further their understanding by using more advanced skills and completing larger projects. One recent example is canoe stands, which required the use of complex angles, joints, and pitches, which demonstrates their understanding of all of the things coming together. This will be useful down the road for building houses and more complex things. And then they really try to, the teacher really tries to do a good combination of like applicable real-world skills, and then also using advanced math such as trigonometry. In terms of sports at Sentinel, Sentinel is hosting the Rocky Mountain Classic this weekend on Friday and Saturday. This is a multi-day tournament, and our team has a really good dynamic this year. And so, and we have a lot of seniors, which is really good leadership for all of the younger students and athletes. We have five or six girls out this year compared to the two that we had last year. And we also are hosting the Garden City Meet this year, and so we're looking forward to hosting that. Our girls' basketball team is improving at every practice. We're only a couple of games into the regular season, and we have really high hopes. We have a tight-knit team that keeps the dynamic working very well. And our biggest upcoming event is the GOAT game, which is a spirit competition hosted at a basketball game. For the boys' team, we're coming off of a four-game winning streak, and the team dynamic is growing with each practice. Our team chemistry is improving at every game, and they have a tough couple of games ahead of them. And so we're wishing them the best luck and support. These games will really show them how to work through adversity and expand and grow as a team. Lastly, our girls' swimming team is a very close-knit community as well. The swimmers all practice together from each high school. And there's a really great team dynamic, and everyone is very supportive and encouraging of their peers. It's a mix of new and old, like experienced swimmers, and it's fun to see all the different people come together. Our upcoming meets are in Missoula on January 18th and in Butte on January 25th. Ms. Martin's AP Research, students are excited that they just received a $2,000 grant from the Missoula Electric Cooperative. This funding will primarily allow them to compensate students that are like, take, like study subjects, and then with gift cards and other incentives. This is crucial for encouraging participation and ensuring high-quality data for their research projects. Many of her students are tackling complex topics but face challenges due to limited access to resources. This grant can help purchase essential supplies and equipment that will enhance their research capabilities. And having the right tools will enable them to collect and analyze important data. The Sentinel community helped raise almost $7,000 to help over 100 students and more than 90 households this holiday season. This was possible thanks to many students and teachers around the school. And then lastly, Sentinel will attend the State Theater Festival at the University of Montana on January 24th and 25th. We will be performing one act of Little Women that is student-directed by one of our seniors. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. I do enjoy listening to our student updates. So next up, we are on to announcements from the superintendent.
Good evening, and thank you. I have a few things to share with the board tonight. One, our Innovative Education Program tax credit. At last count this morning, we were at $158,300 of donations, which is about $100,000 less than last year. But last year, we had one donor do $200,000. So we have a lot more participation from our community in supporting our programs through that opportunity. Tomorrow, the window opens, and it's a mad dash to get all of those entered before the credit is all used up. The cumulative amount for the entire state is $6 million, which is up $1 million from last year. So Pat and his team of data entry people, it's become important. Word processing, words per minute is now actually something that we count on when putting that information in. So we're excited about that and grateful for our community. Next board meeting. What's that?
We're, we had a good morning or a good day. We're up a little over 100,000 from that number, so.
Wow. Okay, well, thanks for sharing.
You bet.
Next board meeting, we are going to be bringing first reading of the electronic acceptable use policy to the board. So that'll be an opportunity to provide feedback. We basically created a policy based off of the information that we've gathered through survey. And there is some option in there for board to consider as you do that. But we've also put it through legal counsel for review to make sure that we're in line with where we could or should be. So excited to have that conversation. We have some committees that are starting up. The Budget and Levy Committee meetings will start January 24th. Facilities will start in early February. And Cheryl Person's going to talk a little bit more about that at the end of the meeting today, talking about committee assignments and when that will take place. So stay tuned for that. Legislative update. Our advocacy efforts are mostly aligned with our partners like the Montana School Boards Association, School Administrators of Montana, the Coalition of Advocates for Public Schools. And I say mostly aligned because I get a little disappointed from time to time when the, the people that we're paying dues to, to advocate on behalf of public education are standing on the sidelines and saying, "We're just going to monitor a bill. We're not going to weigh in one way or the other." And I get it. These organizations represent a broad swath of interests as they represent almost all school districts across Montana or administrators across Montana. But I feel like if the board is following legislation through the updates through MTSBA or any of the other organizations, and you feel strongly that these organizations need to take a position, I encourage you to contact those organizations. That's your right as a board. We pay membership dues. You can work through Arlene or, is it Jenny? Jenny? Jenny, who also have connections because they're on that board. And Anne as well. So anyway, I just encourage you, one way or the other, that, that's your right as a, as a trustee to, to say, you know, "We want to be heard on this issue." And when I see that you're only monitoring a specific bill, and I feel like that speaks against the values that we put forward, then that's okay. But you also have the right to say otherwise too, like, "We don't want you to support that bill." Or I have more questions. Can you help us understand why you would take this position or not take a stance on something? So, but I shared a little bit with, I had an opportunity to meet with some city and county folks, other LEAs, and government agencies. As we were going into this legislative session, there was a group that got together. And I shared with them kind of just a synopsis of what we're supporting and what we're opposing. Right now, there's 280-plus bills that are currently being heard regarding education. Those could be a House bill, a Senate bill, or they could be coming out of legislative committee from the interim session. As you should be aware, we always support school funding efforts. There's a proposal put forward to modify the funding formula, as well as some new interesting language around the decennial study that happens every 10 years by law. So going to be paying close attention to that. We are supportive of the 3% inflationary increase over the next two years, where that can be problematic from a budgeting standpoint. Pat would know, is if they say, "Okay, well, we're going to give you the 3% and 3%, but we're going to only give you 2.57 this year, and we'll give you the 3.43 the following year." So that can make things a little bit challenging if you don't know exactly what that's going to be coming into the start of a year and building those things. The STARS Act, you know, $52 to $54 million over the next biennium. It's fully intended to raise teacher pay, so we're going to continue to support those efforts. And then special education issues, we're obviously very involved and want to look at those things. So asking the state to fully fund IDA, increase their contributions. Support AMB for developmental preschool. We can talk a lot about that, but as an example, we, that's a program that's running about $1.3 million for the district annually. We get $56,000 of federal support and $0 of local support for, you know, AMB purposes or anything else. So we're after, we're always going after that. Supporting recruitment and retention efforts. We saw that there was a bill that was being proposed to up the limit from three years to five years of post-retirement teaching, so you can be paid and earn your retirement, which is great except it's only for Class 2 and Class 3 districts. So that doesn't really support the needs of a Double A district or other large districts in Montana. Anything related to mental health initiatives and funding for students and that support. Any school safety legislation, obviously supporting. But we are openly opposing vouchers and anything that seeks to direct public funds to private education and charter, private charter schools. And then opposing just what I refer to as discriminatory and manufactured crisis legislation. So, you know, we're seeing a lot in the news about the bathroom bills, and some of those things are coming through. We're just, we're going to stand strong that our, our position as a, as a public school is that we educate all students regardless. And so anything that's seeking to harm our international families or anything of that nature, we're going to, we're going to stand up and say, "We're not, we're not for that." Also, there's some legislation that I think being proposed that seeks to diminish local control. And again, that's a, that's a school district. That's our trustees' purview to make determinations about curriculum. And, you know, obviously with oversight from the Board of Public Ed and OPI. But there was some stuff that came out of the interim committee that, you know, OPI was now going to pre-approve any of the vendors that we could possibly look at for our curriculum purchases, which pretty much narrows down the list. So it kind of takes the, the control away from the, the district to be able to do that. And then any legislation that seeks to change current laws around bonds levies, voting margins, changing mils to dollars, all of those kind of things. So there's a lot going on in the legislature, and if you're not able to keep up on it, I understand. It's a lot for me to keep up on, but we're doing our best. And we meet weekly as a legislative network to talk about all the different things that are coming through and where we can stand and how we can support and advocate for public education. That was number four out of eight. Sorry. Special education program review is underway. Vern has been active in our district last week and this week, and will be here for a couple more days next week. He's been doing site visits this week, met with a lot of administrative staff the week prior, gathering data and information. Have had great feedback so far from staff who've had the opportunity to interact with Vern. And he's doing a great job of listening and giving me updates periodically. I had one teacher after I sent out the email who said, "Thank you. I just want to tell you, thank you. Having Vern come to do a review is incredibly exciting. Thank you for listening, coordinating this, and being open to feedback. Truly, thank you." So I think our, our staff is appreciative of those efforts and the support of the administration and the board for that. Governor Jean Forte is planning to visit MCPS on February 26th to view our work related to transformational learning and advanced opportunities. A couple of grants that we'll be approving tonight with a focus on our work-based learning opportunities. We have some really exciting things happening in our district relative to those efforts, and we're, we're glad to share it. We believe that it's, it's fitting in with the overall goals and mission of MCPS. So we're glad to do that. Special shout-out to Ashley House, our special ed teacher at Missoula Sentinel, who was selected as the High School Educator of the Year through the Missoula Education Foundation. That was a great honor for her, if you were able to, to be there and see that. They had an assembly and were able to recognize her for those efforts. And then tomorrow, 1 to 4, same bat time, same bat channel. We're here for a board retreat, and so looking forward to that. There's my update.
All right, thank you very much Superintendent Hill. Next up is the Consent Agenda. There is no board discussion for consent agenda items as these are routine. If any member of the board wishes to discuss an consent agenda item, there must be a motion made, seconded and voted upon to move the item onto the agenda. There'll be two motions, an elementary and a high school. Is there a motion from an elementary trustee to approve the elementary consent agenda items? Moved by Vice Chair of Garris. Is there a second? Trustee Walsh, there is no board discussion. Any public comments on this agenda item? Seeing none, all elementary trustees in favor for approving the consent agenda items? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Next up is a high school consent agenda item. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items? Moved by Trustee Davis, seconded by Trustee Wake. There is no board discussion. Any public comments on this agenda item? Seeing none, all trustees in favor for approving the high school consent agenda items? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is number eight, which is new business. And first up is to the lease of space at Cold Springs built in by United Way of Missoula. And this is over to Mr. McHugh.
All right, thank you. So we have a lease with the Missoula Child Care Advantage there at Cold Springs. This request is for board approval to amend the lease to add an eighth classroom just through June. So this is a minor modification to the existing lease. The rental rate will be the same as for the current lease per square foot, and, and it's, as mentioned, just short-term through June.
All right, are there any questions from a trustee? Seeing none, this is a full board motion. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by Trustee Hayes, seconded by Trustee Wake. Is there any final trustee comments? Seeing none, any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, all trustees in favor of approving the recommendation? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all element, to all trustees present. Next up is personnel negotiations and policy. And first, and I'll pass it over to you, Mr. Lebowski.
Thank you. This is really purely administrative. We, we don't have any employees impacted by this, so it's essentially information only. And if we were to create a position, it would have to match at least minimum wage. So we're notifying you of that fact.
Any questions or comments by trustee? Seeing none, any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, next up is to approve the personnel report. And there'll be two, an elementary and a high school. Any comment for the personnel report?
No, nothing, nothing of note.
All right, is there an elementary motion to approve the elementary personnel report? Moved by Trustee Walsh, seconded by Vice Chair of Garris. Any trustee questions or comments? Seeing none, any public comments? Seeing none, all elementary trustees in favor for approving the elementary personnel report? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Is there a high school motion to approve the high school personnel report? Moved by Trustee Wake, seconded by Trustee Davy. Any trustee comments? Any public comment? All trustees in favor for approving the high school personnel report? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is to approve the transformational learning grant application, and this is over to Superintendent Hill.
Thank you. We actually have a few grants in front of the board tonight. I think the first thing to recognize is that you've actually already approved the grants through board action last year. And then annually, we're required to submit a report to the Office of Public Instruction detailing how we've implemented the grant, if we're meeting our goals, the things that we're doing. And you'll see that all that information is contained in the, in the annual report. You can see that the current funding from the state is $362,850. We permissively levy the other half of that. That is the total of the quality educator payment for a total of $725,000 and change. What's interesting about the transformational learning grant is when we applied, the state allocated a certain number of dollars, we'll just say $4 million statewide. And basically, you got into a lottery. You submitted the grant, Board of Public Ed approved it, our board approved it. And then they basically draw your Lotto ball to see where you're going to land in the queue to receive funding. And so we're actually eligible for far more funding based on what we wrote in the grant than we're actually receiving because we're at the very bottom of the list in our, with the elementary district being Lotto ball number four, and our high school district was Lotto ball number five. So hopefully, everybody's following that. So when we received funding this year, OPI contacted me and said, "Well, we'll let you choose since you have two districts, one's four and five, which one you want the funding to go to." And I said, "Well, elementary." And if I had, if I had thought through it a little bit more like I had this year, I would have said, "Can I split it between both districts? Can I reduce the number of FTE that we're identifying in the elementary district and the high school district?" Because right now, the funds can only be spent on elementary, and so it leaves no funds for high school. So in the grant application, we actually reduced the number of FTE on the elementary side and left the high school side the same, so that we'll basically have equal funding for both going into next year. Makes sense? Maggie, you look at like you're confused or I didn't articulate very well?
No, you super articulated well. I just am wondering, what does that mean in regards to number of bodies in the elementary school?
Absolutely nothing. It is, the, so when we submitted the grant, you could submit it based on your FTE. So a district could say, you know, Power Montana only has four teachers, and so they're only submitting for four FTE. We have 800 teachers, and I could have submitted for 200, but I submitted for all 800, both elementary and high school combined. We just reduced the number to match the amount of money that's going to be available through the legislative appropriation. So it doesn't change anything for our schools. It affects nobody's FTE or anything like that. It's just, yep, it's, it's the funding mechanism for it. What I would say though, and if you wanted to spend some time, you know, we, there's a lot of information in here about progress made, and I am really proud of the efforts of our staff. Barbara, Casey Lazlovic, Amy, Vinnie. of our staff, Barbara, Casey Lazovich, Amy, Vinnie, as we move in a direction where we're talking about personalized competency-based education. And we'll spend some time in the board retreat tomorrow, talking a little bit about our strategic plan and how, what we, what we're doing with these grant dollars aligns with the, the work that was outlined in the strategic plan. So be glad to answer questions about it if there are any. Yeah, Tina?
Okay. So on page 25, there's the transformational learning funds are supporting an ex, oh my gosh, expeditionary learning pilot. What, what schools are doing this?
I'm going to kick it over to Barbara here for just a second.
Hello. The schools that we have doing the pilot right now are Franklin, Russell, and Teach Academy.
Okay. I, I have another one, sorry. What is the three-year plan? On page 26, it says, "MCPS has a three-year plan around teacher clarity, high-impact instructional practices."
All right. So our three-year plan, this, we're in the second year of our three-year implementation for teacher clarity. Teacher clarity is kind of a bundle of high-impact evidence-based practices that form the foundation of our instructional framework for the school district. So this is the second year, we call this year gaining, gathering evidence and so we're gathering evidence in all of our schools of teacher clarity practices. The goal through teacher clarity is for teachers to be exceptionally clear and in their instruction and to choose strategies that have a high impact on student learning. But the ultimate goal is for students to take agency of their learning and be the ones who own those questions. So one of the things we're doing this year is in all of our schools, we're asking students the three questions of, what are you learning? Why is this important? And how do you know you're successful? And we're starting to gather evidence around those three questions to see what is visible to students, what agency are they taking? And then we're using this year to decide how to target professional development at all of our schools. So rather than a one-size-fits-all develop, professional development approach, we're really taking kind of a tiered strategy like we do with students to identify teachers who need more support and teachers who are really what we would call the runners and are, are leading the way in implementing these high-impact strategies. Next year, we'll call that year three as deliberate practice where we're going to have some essential expectations in our classrooms of things that we want to see in all of our classrooms. We'll be doing more learning walks and providing more professional development. And I'll be coming back to your next board meeting with some additional information about our PIR plan and professional development plan that facilitates the work of teacher clarity. The real goal of teacher clarity is that we start to develop the foundational practices of competency-based learning and really developing that student agency. So students are setting goals, identifying where their learning is going and choosing those pathways that matter the most so that we make their learning meaningful and our students are graduating, as you'll see, with the traits of our graduate profile, which we'll be bringing to your next board meeting.
So are there certain schools that are doing this?
This is a district-wide implementation.
Okay.
Yeah, we actually, trustees that were on the site visit to Jeanette Rankin, we were given the three questions and we went into classrooms and we sat down with students and got to ask them the three questions. What are you learn, not what are you doing, what are you learning? And so it was fun to actually hear them kind of articulate back what was going on in their classrooms and it was kindergarten all the way through.
Thank you.
Any other questions from a trustee? Vice Chair Walker Andrews?
It's not really a question, but a comment. I received a message from a friend the other day asking if I'd seen the New York Times article about agency and students and how important that was and she wanted to know if we were doing that, which was really nice because then I could say, "Teacher clarity and here's what it's all about," so.
Okay. There'll be two motions, an elementary recommendation and a secondary. So are you done with this presentation part? Okay. So is there a motion from an elementary trustee to approve the recommendation? Moved by Vice Chair of Garris, seconded by trustee Walsh. Any final trustee comments? Any public comments? All elementary trustees in favor for approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Next up, is there a high school motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by Vice Chair Walker Andrews, seconded by trustee Wake. Any final trustee comments? Any public comments? All trustees in favor for approving the high school recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is to approve the Montana Advanced Opportunity Grant Act renewal and back to Superintendent Hill.
Thank you. So another grant through the state, which this one was not a lottery. It was just if you submit and you have a plan, it gets approved by the Board of Public Ed, the state will fund to a certain level the advanced opportunities. And the idea behind advanced opportunities was to, the initial idea was to help defray out-of-pocket expenses for students and families to engage in advanced opportunities. And this can take it shape in a lot of different ways. It could be anything from helping a student purchase welding equipment so that they can work on their certification to outdoor clothing for kids who are building sheds in the wintertime outdoors. It can be for paying course fees that students might otherwise pay for, say, taking a woodshop class. So the list goes on, but, and a lot of it had a focus on career and tech ed-related things, but we've expanded that focus to also include running start, concurrent enrollment, AP testing, IB testing, where we're picking up a portion of those costs that would otherwise be passed on to parents so that we're encouraging the, our students to be engaged in the advanced opportunities that are available to them. So we've done things like paid for either all or part of CTSO trips for BPA, for example, to go to nationals. We're working with community partners to place kids in work-based learning experiences and internships. There was actually, it's on page four of the grant for the high school side, we're offering certified nursing assistant coursework, but we also had 50 placements for students in work-based learning experiences this, since this fall. So we've been just continually working at that. The other 25% of the, the funds are the, for the district to use. And if you remember last year, when we were going through our budget reduction processes, one of the things that we did, we were paying for a position out of this grant and because it was a, it was shifting a cost to the general fund, we were looking at ways that we could continue to enhance this and maybe expand it beyond just a single position. So we're using it to pay for stipends for our CTSO organizations, so Skills USA, BPA, HOSA, DECA. We've been trying to use those funds to better support a broader range throughout the district. The, the funding for this is a little bit different. It's still based on a quality educator payment, but it's 30% of all of your FTE in the high school and 4.5% of your FTE in elementary. So the elementary receives a much smaller portion, so not nearly as much. And those would typically be used to support middle-school-aged activities related to advanced opportunities, whereas the high school side, there's quite a bit more money that's involved with that. One of the things that you'll notice in this is we had a carryover of about $260,000 from last year to this year. And we have, one of the decisions that I made was to take away a little bit of what was the district holding on to it and making all the decisions about whether or not the funds were going to be used for a specific project or a program. And we've given that control, that 75% to the building principals. They know what the needs are, they know where the, and so they have the discretion to say, "Yes, I've got this." So we allocated based off of FTE in each school so that everybody has a, an appropriate or a, a portion of the share of what those dollars were. So those dollars have been refunded back out. You look at the expenditures on those and right now, year-to-date, we're at $162,000. That was from September until December. So we're going to see a lot more use of those funds as the year goes on and so next year's report will look a little bit different. But again, just super excited about the work that's happening in the district and the, the staff that are supporting those efforts.
Any trustee questions? Trustee Hayes?
Thank you so much. One question I have is on page four, it says that MCPS, we are dedicated to ensuring that every student has support and resources that they need to thrive academically and prepare for future careers. How are we doing that for all students?
Well, the opportunity exists for all students, whether someone takes advantage of it, but what we don't want it to be is if a student says, "I want to be in, say, robot, middle school robotics," that if it costs money, we have a way to fund and support that student through that experience. Or if someone says, "I really want to be in a workplace experience, but I can't afford to because I have, you know, I can't afford the gas to get back and forth," we can provide the support to make sure that that doesn't go, that that expense doesn't necessarily all shift to the parent.
And do all students know this?
Great question. You know, in, in terms of the work that our counselors are doing, our building administration, you know, anything related to, say, like if we're paying for 75% of IB testing, yes, they know that they have that opportunity to access that.
Okay. And one more question on page six, it says, "Finally, the district's top priority is to expand work-based learning programs by 25%, ensuring that students have access to practical experiences throughout the year." So what are we doing to increase and where are we at with that?
Yeah, so a lot of that work happens with our community partners, our business partners. As an example, Neptune Aviation, just last week, told us that they would take on six students. So we have Courtney Kirkos who does quite a bit of legwork and is a liaison with our community business partners to look for those opportunities. And then it's a matter of scheduling it out, building it into the student's schedule. A lot of times it involves, "Well, I need, you know, senior English to graduate, but I have a fourth period and my opportunity is here, so can we get some of those things sorted out?" So it, it, there's quite a bit of work that goes on with it. And I know we have some FTE at the high schools, in particular Big Sky, that support those students who are in those internships and work-based learning experiences, so.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other trustee questions? CNN, we will have two recommendations. First up, is there an elementary motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by trustee Hayes, seconded by Vice Chair of Garris. Any final trustee comments? CNN, any public comment? All elementary trustees in favor for approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Next up, is there a high school motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by trustee Wake, seconded by trustee Davy. Any final trustee comments? CNN, any public comment? All trustees in favor for approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is the elementary topic and it's to approve the Department of Natural Resource, Urban and Community Forest IRA grant application. And this is over to Ms. Frank. Ms. Frank?
Thank you. We're excited to request your approval on a grant application to help us begin improving the playground at the Jefferson Elementary Complex. This grant would not only add trees, but would add an outdoor classroom, including a shade structure for students. It includes a stipend for a teacher to oversee the project as well as a professional landscaping to help us plan and make that playground something that the students can be proud of.
Any trustee questions? Vice Chair Walker Andrews?
I just have a quick question because I was at CS Porter yesterday. Was that a similar kind of grant? Okay.
Yep. This is the next year's round of that same grant.
Any other trustee questions? CNN, this is an elementary motion. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by trustee Witcher, seconded by Vice Chair of Garris. Any final trustee comments? I, I have a comment. As a Jefferson parent, my eighth grader attended Jefferson and the last site visit I did at Jefferson, it was the same playground, so this is very exciting and I know that the students there will love it. So thank you for taking this on. Any public comment? CNN, all elementary trustees in favor of approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. All right. Next up is item nine, which is Board of Trustees. And first up is the superintendent evaluation and again, this is information only. Tracy Long will be emailing the trustees tomorrow, January 15th, the superintendent evaluation form and job description. Each trustee will complete the form and return to Walena via email, or you can put it in my box as well, but I will take it either way, by Friday, January 24th. And then I will follow the evaluation procedure and prepare a single document reflecting the average of the individual trustee's numeric evaluations. And the last time we did this, there was some conflict, but we got, in terms of the numbering system, but this year we got it. So make sure you get the document that Tracy sends, not a forwarded document, the one Tracy sends. The evaluation will be presented to Superintendent Micah Hill in an executive session, which will be held at the end of the regular board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, January 28th. So that's what's happening, so watch for your emails for that. And then again, back to me on January 24th. Yes.
Did you write the evaluation or what evaluation did we use?
It is similar. So the board leadership, that includes myself as well as the vice chairs, looked at the document and we, I don't think we had any revisions, so.
[inaudible]
Yeah. Yeah, except for, yeah, so the board leadership are the ones that really took on this and that's what we looked at and worked with Tracy in terms of, so you'll get that document. Are there any public comments in regards to this agenda item? CNN, next up is a trustee committee appointment. And so this again is an information only and what it is, is Board Policy 1230. And in our new diligent community, you guys can search policies in that as well, if you haven't, if you have your computer, you can pop it open. But it talks about the committees that we have and we do have some standing committees, which Superintendent Hill spoke about, which are the Budget and Levy Committee and the Facilities Committee. And it is the chair's authority to appoint trustees to these committees and we have had the board trustees serving on these committees and we wanted to go ahead and mix it up. And if you serve on these committees, can you raise your hand if you're on the Budget and Levy Committee? And so they are currently serving on this committee and if you are interested to be on this committee or if you want more information on this committee, please email me directly and I will take that into account. And then the next one is the Facilities Committee. If you're on the Facilities, please raise your hand. Again, the, these are trustees who have been on these committees and so we wanted to bring in different face and different things, but if we don't have any of those, those serving as well on will remain on those committees. So again, if you're interested in those committees, in Facilities Committees, please email me directly and then I will go ahead and look at all of those. And as a board, one of the things we will be looking at tomorrow in our retreat are the priorities and board governance. And I think this is one of the area where we can really, not board governance, strategic plan. Strategic plan and setting priorities as a board, if we see any other committees that we see we want to bring forth, if you look at the Policy 1230, it talks about how we can create another committee that we see we need to bring forward. That's something we can also look at then. Are there any questions in regards to that? Trustee Davy?
Can you hear me? Yep. Thanks, Walena. I would like to propose an ad hoc committee to look at community and cultures within our schools and our district to be able to understand how different programs and practices are contributing or potentially not contributing to community and culture building. Every site visit that I've been to, I've asked questions about what the administrator would like to do if money was no object and also listened to them talk a lot about how proud they are of the community and culture they're able to build at their school and also noticed the wide variety of ways that we're building community and culture. When administrators answer, a lot of times their answers focus on, "We need a staff person that can help with community" or "We need spaces..." person that can help with community," or "We need spaces in our school that are like school-community spaces." And so I can tell it's, you know, an important frame for our schools right now. I also think that MCPS has lost some of the "I belong to" MCPS as a whole. We have some really great school identity, but I think there could be some strength in "I belong to" like Missoula County Public Schools, and as a district, having some community and identity. I do think that this could be important if we're looking at redistricting. I think families can have an idea of a certain school's identity or culture or things about it. And so, having a, "Hey, I belong to this district, and I get to be a part of this district," and also being able to highlight a lot of the positive community things that are happening at our schools could be important in that process. So that is why I would like to propose an ad hoc committee that we kind of investigate those things through.
Yep, and all of that can come forward tomorrow. So think of it, think of the idea that trustee Davy here brought forward, that we can also set as priorities once we do meet tomorrow. But that was a good idea of how, as a district or a board, we can bring forward something like that. Trustee Mercer?
I guess I thought we had a transportation committee. There was Jeff.
Yes, but since we are not in negotiations currently, we are not, we do not have that. It's not, yeah, it's not a standing one. Sorry, Jeff. You, thank you for all your work. So, yeah, and these are our standing committees. All right, so are there any public comments on this agenda item? CNN, so next up will be the MTSBA Public Education Day, and I'll turn it over to vice chair Arlene Walker Andrews.
I just wanted to ask people to continue to look at the information you get primarily from Emily Dean at MTSBA about various bills. As was mentioned, there's something like 280 education bills out there ranging, you can't believe the range, that they're trying to do. And I think tomorrow, we can discuss a little bit more about it because my understanding of the word "monitor" isn't that they're not necessarily taking a stance, but they're waiting to get a little more information before they make that. So we'll have to be thinking about that. Anyway, the other thing I wanted to do is invite all of the people who can to go to Education Day on the 29th. That starts with a panel discussion at nine in the morning in Helena. I'm planning to go unless we have a blizzard, and so that means leaving the house or giving somebody a ride if somebody wants to go with me pretty early. And then after the panel discussion, then we all go to the Capitol and eat our free lunch, which is, you know, a sandwich, and meet with legislators. And then we're invited in the afternoons to either attend committee meetings or just the whole Senate floor, something of that nature. So let me know if you're planning to go or interested. And another point I wanted to make, I looked this up the other day, because I sometimes think that we don't give ourselves enough credit, or maybe people don't realize that, yes, we are indeed supposed to run the schools. That's our elected position. And so I was looking at the number of people, of course, in the House. There's 100 of them. Seventeen of those individuals have gotten more than 5,000 votes when they were elected. The person who got the most votes was a person in District 69 with 6,222 votes. If I remember correctly, Walena got 12,252 votes. So the people in this room have often gotten more votes than the people in the House that are deciding a lot of stuff for education, and I think we ought to remember that. Won't make me very popular with the legislature, but I think we need to remember that. And I will mention, you mentioned a bill that's out there to, again, try to change the way school's voting times and things like that are held, so not making it in May, but making it at a different time. Or another thing is to suggest that unless X percent of the population of registered voters actually votes, that even if your levy is approved, it shouldn't count. And I happened to notice that the person who got the very most votes to actually serve in the House only got 4,000 votes when they ran in their primary. So to suddenly say that schools have to have a different standard for the number of people who vote than do legislators seems odd to me as well. So that's my spiel for this evening.
Thank you very much for that update, and thank you to all my voters. I appreciated it. The time is now 6:56. We are adjourned. Thank you.